Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the swearing-in ceremony for the Salisbury City Council and Mayor on November 25th, 2019. I would ask that each of you please silence any electronic devices that make noise, and that please notice the exits that are marked, and in case of emergency, please proceed in orderly fashion, and we have plenty of people to help you find the exits standing in the back, so thank you.
There we do.
Before we begin the official ceremony tonight, I would like to clear up a little bit of confusion. Last week, by charter, the council had to be sworn in, and the election of President and Vice President had to be done, according to the charter, which we did. And the people you see before you have been sworn in already. We are going to be sworn in again tonight as a group, and the Mayor will be sworn in. He was not here. He was in training last week, so that will be what's going to take place tonight. At this time, I would like to recognize the dignitaries that are present. So if you're on here, you're a dignitary. Please stand when I call your name, and to be recognized. From the Governor's office, Ryan Snow. Ryan here. Senator Cardin's office, Kim Cradaville. From Senator Van Hollen's office, Melissa Kelly. From the Comptroller's office, Mr. Lynn Foxwell. Also, the Regional Representative of the Comptroller's Office, Dave Wooton. Senator Addie Eckert. Delegate Cherry Sample Hughes. State's Attorney, Jamie Dykes. Clerk of the Court, James Bo McAllister. County Council President, John Cannon. Wycomico County Superintendent of Schools, Donna Hanlon and her husband, Dave. President of Salisbury University, Chuck White, and his wife, Victoria Rasmussen. President and CEO of Greater Salisbury Committee, Mike Dunn. Executive Director of SWED, Dave Ryan. Delegate Carl Landerton. And Salisbury University's President's Chief of Staff, Eli Modlin. If there's anybody I missed, I apologize, please. Who's there? Josh Hastings from the County Council. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
Sub move.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. At this time, we'll have the presentation of colors by the Salisbury Police Department, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and followed by the National Anthem sung by our own Angie Jenkins. Please rise.
Stand there. Up. Hoop. Forward. Hoop. Mark time. Hoop. Detail. Hoop. Right. Hoop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Line. Hoop. Forward. Hoop.
Please be seated. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Martin Hutchinson of Community of Joy Church for the invocation.
Let us pray. God of each new day, we are grateful for the potential and possibility of this day that we are given. For the opportunity to start fresh, or to continue building on the foundation of yesterday and the collection of all our yesterdays, we thank you. For we realize that all our days are a gift from you. We thank you tonight for the strong, bold visionary leadership of our Mayor, Jake Day, who saw in us what we could not see for ourselves, who dreamed dreams for our city that we were afraid to dream, who recognized the good, but not only that, knew how to call it forth and channel it so that it could become lasting reality, who knew how to articulate a bold vision of what the collection of new days could be, and showed us the way to move in that direction. We are grateful for the accomplishments of the past four years, and tonight, as we stand on the page-turn of a new chapter of our city, we expectantly look forward to the journey that leads us to new heights, the culmination of more good dreams for all our people. God give Mayor Day an ability to listen both to those who share his vision and those who don't. Help him hear the constructive in criticisms and the complaints while being able to reject the personal attack or vindictive attempts to derail. Enhance his ability and commitment to see the humanity and the challenges that rise up. Grant him wisdom to discern those things he should be part of and those that can be left to others on the great team he has assembled. Multiply his time with his precious family, as once the day is gone, it will never be given back. Bless his wife Liz and the girls, as they live life in a fishbowl. Grant them supportive and caring friends who will fill the gaps when Jake is serving either our country or city in the countless nights and weekends away. The cost of public service is high, and the rewards are great, but grant an even measure of both personal and public time to our mayor. As we stand on the page-turn of what will go down as an epoch in our city's history, raise up supportive and generous citizens who are willing to roll up their sleeves and join in the transformative work, as together we create a kinder, more livable, generous community that enhances the dreams of all its people in each of its neighborhoods, and keep us ever mindful of the leadership role we have in helping other cities experience a renaissance of their own. God continue to bless and guide the relationship between Mayor and City Council, that the commitment they have to civility may set a model for all of us of how we work together, even when our perspectives may differ. God help us to let go of the things that divide us and individual perspectives, to pursue common ground and an ability to work for the common good of our neighbor, near and far. Lead us on new paths, and in such a way that the work we do together would honor you and give testimony to your love and grace lived out in our life together. We pray all of this in the power of your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. At this time, I'd like to invite Nancy Mitchell, the poet laureate of the city of Salisbury, to come up for a reading.
Poem written for the swearing-in of Salisbury's Mayor and City Council, November 25th, 2019. The celebratory confetti has been swept from the streets and champagne glasses put back on the shelf, and although we're still savoring victory's sweet taste, tonight we gather in a mood more subdued. Befitting this momentous and auspicious occasion to witness our mayor and city councils swear their loyalty and honesty, to perform their duties with integrity, and to fulfill their campaign promises to the best of their abilities. And although it's true our mayor has said, "We've got the wind in our sails," he wisely knows that even the strongest gale is no avail for the long voyage ahead without a stalwart and faithful crew, and that means me and you. In other words, we still have work to do, all hands on the deck for the duration. We'll face both balmy days and tempest-tossed seas, but with our captain at the helm, his eyes firmly set on the goal ahead, we will weather any storm. As he navigates the treacherous and narrow straits, our ship will not break on the jagged rocks of adversity. In four years, we'll be brought to port, led by the light of our transformed city, a shining beacon on the hill. I base his unwavering confidence not only on the evidence of our brilliant past achievements, but on one fleeting, revealing moment I was blessed to witness. Last fall, while stopped at a light on Camden Ave, I saw my mayor running in the autumn dusk, heavy, heavy rucksack on his back, combat boots ringing the cement. In the streetlight, I saw his face, pure as a Vermeer painting, luminous and racked with grief, his bright gaze straight ahead, and from that moment on, I knew that anything that man would ever say or do would be true. A ruck march, I later learned what a soldier does to honor a fallen soldier, in this case, Jake's dearly beloved Bull. And although I did not know this angel of a man, the depth of loss of him felt by those who did stung me to tears. And since I've come to see that rucksack metaphorically, it's filled with every campaign promise the mayor has made, and no matter how heavy and burdensome, I know he will never take it off, will stay the course and fulfill every single one. For Bull, for me, and you, and you, and you. So here I am, of whom it has many times been said, "That woman cannot be led," to humbly bow my head and pledge my allegiance and support for the voyage ahead, and I know I speak for the rest of the crew, me and you, when I say, as I salute you, Captain, our Captain, our Mayor.
At this time, we will have the swearing-in of the City Council by James Bo McAllister,
Everyone, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jake Day.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of City Councilmember.
Execute the office of City Councilmember.
For the city of Salisbury, Maryland.
For the city of Salisbury, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
At this time, I would like to call the Mayor up for his swearing-in ceremony.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jake Day.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Mayor for the city of Salisbury, Maryland.
Execute the office of Mayor for the city of Salisbury, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're in a world that's changing quickly. In Washington, DC, we're watching the impeachment proceedings of a president. In Annapolis, our state is grappling with the challenging weight of our children's future and potentially $4 billion a year in cost. In cities like ours, challenges and debates are common. The politics of a town can be divisive. They can pit neighbor against neighbor, and they can split a city on ideas or partisanship, on values and priorities. But once in a while, a city can find common cause. It may have been the depths of a recession, or the height of crime, or the fissure between political sides that brought us here. But its vision, and its aspiration, and its purpose, and its proof, that'll keep us here. We are unique. We're not Frederick, and we're not Annapolis, and we're not Charlottesville, and we're not Rockville, we're not South Bend, and we're not New York City. We are Salisbury, and we've got hope, and I know we've got promise, and we're aspiring for even better, and we are certain that no one, not one soul, should be left behind in those aspirations. And on November 5th, one single voice, Salisbury's, spoke loudly, echoing across the Chesapeake Bay, that we affirm the magic in what we've achieved these past few years. Big plans, bold plans, undaunted and undeterred from new heights, swift implementation. I believe that old political games have been rendered moot in this era. Of the last five months, I found myself at doorsteps and dining room tables, in places where people shared with me their enthusiasm. They're energized and excited for positive change, but they also shared with me the things that needed fixing. Some of those things were like a curb that needed painting, a restaurant that our city doesn't have, but we need, a traffic light that needs to be retimed. You like that line, Lily? A family at risk of losing housing, or a kid afraid of a bully at school. Some of these things we can address. Others, like Cracker Barrel, I'm just gonna say it, it's the restaurant we're talking about, are beyond our control. But we must thoughtfully consider the needs of every person and every family if we're going to be a unified city, and if we're going to continue in that vein. Salisbury must know that they have the word of their mayor, my word, that no matter who you are, no matter your identity, no matter your birthplace, no matter your politics or your neighborhood, whether you're from here, or whether you chose here, Salisbury is with you, and this is your hometown. And with that unity, we can tackle anything. We'll continue to be a city that leads on reducing homelessness. We'll continue to be a city that improves access to critical mental health care for all. We'll keep working to provide every child in the city with a safe place and mentorship out of school. This city will continue to operate on results-based management, measuring the facts, not the politics, of a decision. We'll continue to have the most competitive police and fire departments on the peninsula. And in case you didn't already guess it, as long as downtown is the physical center of our city, we'll continue to keep its light lit. With our solidified unity, I believe we can take on challenges that we haven't yet. Bigger challenges that might require our friends on the other side of the city border, that might require partnership from our friends in Annapolis and Washington. We must take on the crushing burden of rent on our citizens. We must directly tackle the rising waters that, yes, bring life into our city, but also bleed into our streets and into our homes and cause perennial damage. We must engage the families living in neighborhoods in need of resurrection, and together, we've got a plan with them, to breathe life back into their streets and into their buildings. And with our unearthed unity, we must stand firm and accept nothing less than the complete resolution to one of the last unfair, inequitable tax systems in any county in the state of Maryland. We must draw the line in the sand on a liquor license system designed to benefit a few, and only seeks domain over the economy and people's money, and their culture, and their events, even the most unifying event our community's ever known. Lastly, we must commit ourselves to the project of ensuring equality for every human in our midst. And in case you were concerned that these tasks were too great for our little town, let me assure you of this. Cities, ladies and gentlemen, are the place where we make our greatest emotional and financial investment. Whatever our region or district, the cluster of humanity in which we choose to buy or rent space to raise our kids is something that has the power to embody the values that we often only assign to nations. Let us model in our little city the grand values of kindness, of equality, of aspiration, of innovation, of welcoming, open arms. The choices we make over the coming four years will reverberate for the next forty. No great city is built by thinking myopically. You can't build a great city waiting and seeing, or pulling back on the reins, and you can't build a great city by turning back time. I don't know what 2059's gonna look like, but I know it's not gonna look like 1959, and it'd be a mistake for us to approach the future with any trepidation or fear. So just as this election isn't about only the next four years, it isn't only about Salisbury, how can we amplify the success of this city across the rest of this peninsula, to our friends in other cities and towns? Friends love to hear great stories, and I think we got a pretty good one to tell. It's the story of a town that just a decade ago seemed lost, with its leaders screaming at one another, business owners mad at the city, residents with no hope that things might change. The story we share with our friends beyond Salisbury today is one of a city functioning again, for its kids, for its businesses, for its families. For the first time, I think somebody's listening to our story. In Columbia, they came to us for help implementing a bike lane network. In Frederick, they sought our help with vacant housing. In Easton, they said, "Help us with downtown revitalization." And in Kent County, they asked for help with tax fairness, a fight we're gonna have to take on. Organizations from across the state, and even our friends in Delaware, have reached out to us for our guidance on how to stand up Housing First programs, and we're eager to share. Not only because we have insight into stormwater management or traffic circles, neighborhood revitalization, or murals, or the coordination of a folk festival, but at a time when our national politics are as rancorous as ever, Salisbury citizens can put their faith in a mayor and council who work hand in hand always, because we understand that we work for the people of Salisbury and not the other way around. The road to this point has been pretty long, but the fruits are becoming more and more evident. For the last two years, downtown Salisbury's been filled with people celebrating the arts and culture and music. 150,000 people last year in our core. Families eating funnel cakes powdered sugar all over my face, our faces collectively. Appalachian storytelling and go-go music, gospel and Hawaiian swing, all giggling and dancing through our city streets. Pretty beautiful scene. And a decade ago, if you'd said that was Salisbury, people might have laughed at you. But now people across this state mark their calendars so they don't miss that fun. That's our story. That's Salisbury's story. And it's one we're still writing, right now. We're writing it in our Main Street, and we're writing it on brick walls. It's a story of humanity. It's one that our children are writing, and our poet laureate is writing. It's a story of thousands of lives searching for harmony, a story for which I'm proud to serve as co-author. I get to help write this little chapter of my hometown's story. So one day, I'm gonna sit bedside with Lily and Olivia, my little princesses, who aren't even listening to Daddy right now, of a gift that we passed on to them, one of a community united, a city aspirant, a place loved by those who inhabit it, but who loves it equally, loves them equally and selflessly back. A gift of the greatest little city in America. I love you, Salisbury, and I'm eternally grateful. And I'm eternally grateful to have been given the gift to serve you. Tonight, we reaffirm the bond between the legislative and executive branches of this municipal government, of a council and mayor who work together with unmatched cohesion. And I'm proud to stand with my colleagues shoulder to shoulder on every fight we face. I won't speak for them, but I believe they would agree with me and echo my sentiments here. My heart is yours, Salisbury. Our heart is yours. And I and we will always be your advocate. Now let's get to work. Thank you all.
Well, there's no way we're gonna follow that. But on behalf of the council, I would like to say that we couldn't have said it better. And I think the important thing for us is to remember why we're here. We're here because of our most important asset in the city, and that's the people. All of, all of you. We don't always agree, but we do agree to agree with respect and dignity. That will not change. I promise you. I know I speak for the council that says we are looking forward to this. I believe we're gonna go on to retreat soon and do a status report on where we are and where we're going. And we're looking forward to that. I thank you all for coming tonight. It's been a great evening. We'll, we're gonna be around for a little while if you'd like to come up and say something. I know a lot of people are looking at their watches. You will make the Ravens game. So without further ado, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. God bless Salisbury. We are adjourned. Lost my head. We have a benediction. I apologize. Professor Kriti Pura, PhD, from the University of Maryland Eastern Shore, please come up for our benediction.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On the behalf of Sikh community of Salisbury, I congratulate Mr. Day for getting re-elected to the position of mayor with over 85% votes. I also congratulate all the members of the city council. Recently, we celebrated 550th birthday of the founder of Sikhism, to whom I belong, to which I belong to. His name is Guru Nanak. Guru stands for master or teacher. He composed a large number of hymns or songs in praise of God, nature, and the environment. Because of his love with the nature and emotional attachment with the environment, Sikhs around the world decided that why should not we celebrate his birthday by planting the same number of trees as 550? With that concept, I approached Mr. Day and also other officials in Salisbury. And in phase one, we planted 15 trees in the city park on the November 9th. And in the second phase, we'll be planting remaining trees in some times in the spring. So thanks to Mr. Day, thanks to all the members of the council, they supported. And now, on the behalf of Sikh community of Salisbury, I will offer the prayer for Mr. Jack and all the members of the council. That prayer would be in Punjabi, in my mother tongue. But before I go into the prayer, I would like to tell you what am I going to be saying in Punjabi so that you don't get lost. We start with by remembering the names of all 10 prophets of Sikhs. So we have 10 prophets or 10 gurus or 10 masters. They all are coming from the same divine. There's only one light that goes from one body to another body. The final 11th guru is a living guru. We call our holy book as a living guru. So we don't have any human being after the 10th prophet. So we consider holy book as a living guru. So we remember the name of holy book as well. After that, we pray to the God to protect us from five evils or five thieves. And these are ego, lust, attachment, anger, and greed. After that, depending on what function you are, we basically pray to the God to offer the blessings to that particular occasion or that event. Since here we are for Mr. Day and also all the members of city council, I'm going to start the prayer. This is going to be in Punjabi. And then in the last sentence, I'm going to pray to the God to do whatever we request to the God. And I request, I offered my prayers to him for offering the blessings to Mr. Day and also all the members of the city council for performing their duties honestly and sincerely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor. Okay, with that, thank you again, everyone, for coming. Thank you at home for those who are watching. And let's get moving.